Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Public Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, of the Shammany School Board. This time, I'd like to call a meeting to order. And Jennifer, may I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Here.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan. We have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met an executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. This time, I have an announcement. Kristin McCreary's proposed appointment needs to be added to the agenda by motion under Item 3.01, "Appointments Administrative Personnel in Order to Comply with the Sunshine Act" as act, as the appointment is being added to the agenda less than 24 hours before tonight's public meeting. The reason the appointment is being added to the agenda is that Section 3.01 was accidentally deleted from the agenda last week. Therefore, I will need a motion to amend the agenda to add Kristin McCreary's appointment at Section 3.01, personnel certificated as an 11-month assistant principal at Maple Point Middle School, with an effective date of January 2nd, 2023, and a salary of $126,047. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbeck. Call for discussion from the public? From the Board? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Agenda item passes added to the agenda at, is that eight?
Zero.
Eight zero.
Eight zero. Thank you. That brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. McGee, please.
My apologies, Kristin. I didn't mean to delete you. I'm sorry. You're back on. The superintendent's report, mostly co-curricular today, very exciting fall. Last Friday, we had our Pink Out at the Shammany High School. The Shammany High School Student Council, led by Senior Kane, raised over $7,500 selling Pink Out shirts district-wide. The day after, the 29th Annual Kaleidoscope of Bands at the Shammany High School, and rumored to be Mr. Lipton, our band director's last Kaleidoscope of Bands. An outstanding event. If you have not seen it, please plan to join us for the 30th next year. On the 27th, which I believe is Thursday, the Shammany High School Drama will put on spooky and kooky at the high school for $7. Come out and see a very festive drama performance at the Shammany High School. Fall sports is continuing. Congratulations to Girls Field Hockey and Girls Soccer, who are both league champions. Girls Field Hockey won their first playoff game yesterday, will play again tomorrow. Girls Soccer won today, their first playoff game, 5-0. And the boys are also, the boys soccer is also in the playoffs. Last report, it was 0-0 at the half. So fall sports is continuing on. A little bit of logistics. I know we've noticed that we're getting a lot of text messages about transportation. What you're seeing is the efforts of 100-plus people make sure our transportation system runs as best as it can every day. So as you know, staffing is difficult, even though we are fully staffed through the course of the regular day. Some people are sick, like you and I get, have family issues, et cetera, and have to take off, and there aren't that many people to step in for them. So our Transportation Department has yet to cancel a run. They pitch in, they do double runs. That includes not only the bus drivers, but the people in the office who normally man the phones. They get out there and drive a bus if they're qualified. And also, the mechanics in the garage, who are qualified, get out there and drive a bus to make sure that we get our kids to school. And I'm proud to say, and I think they're proud to say as well, that we have yet to cancel a bus run, and we hope to be able to continue doing that. But every day, we begin to worry. So if you'd like to drive a bus for us and you're qualified, we are hiring. Please, please come see us, and we will expedite that. Finally, I'd like to turn over the rest of the superintendent's report for Ada Leenhouser and Ryan Leenhouser, here again to remind us about Maple Point's Veterans Day Ceremony. Leenhousers, is that the plural of Leenhouser? Yes, all right. You may come to the podium, press the button, wait for the red light to come on, and you're up.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Leenhouser.
And I'm Ada Leenhouser.
Maple Point Middle School will be holding its annual Veterans Day Ceremony on Thursday, November 10th, 2022. We are happy to announce that the ceremony will be held in person again this year in the Maple Point School Auditorium. This is a wonderful way for our students and community to show appreciation for the sacrifices that our local veterans have made, and to celebrate the courage our veterans have shown in defending our country.
The Maple Point staff and students would like to invite veterans in our community to attend the celebration at Maple Point Middle School the morning of November 10th. Attendees should arrive at the auditorium lobby at 9:30 a.m. for refreshments and check-in. The ceremony will begin at 10:30 a.m. Veterans who are interested in attending should contact Maple Point Middle School, 215-809-6230, or register on the Maple Point website under Announcements. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on November 10th.
Thank you, Ada and Ryan, and I'm looking forward to the ceremony being in person again. Again, Mrs. Foley's hiding in the corner. She has something to do with this whole thing happening, so thank you, Mrs. Foley, and for keeping the tradition alive. Mr. Allen, that's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Ms. Burns, do we have any signups?
Amy Locasala?
Please approach the podium, state your name, address.
I'm Amy Locasala from the Transportation Department. I currently live in Ben Salem, PA. I'm here regarding transportation. I want to let you know what I'm hearing, okay? These are comments that I have gotten the beginning of this year. They are setting us up to fail. They want us to leave. They don't care. It's a plan to make us leave. I'm just going to serve my time and leave. The Transportation Department is being overworked. We have filled the buses to capacity. We have added extra stops. I have an afternoon run that doesn't stop. I can't help anybody. My bus is fully loaded now if the bus breaks down. Okay? There's been a driver shortage since 2018. Our solution so far has been in the Transportation Department, not to replace drivers, but to add people, add students, who are already packed buses, giving drivers more stops and less time to complete the runs. This is leading to us being constantly late to our next schools. Okay? Our highest-capacity buses right now are 78 students per bus. That's three people to a seat. We have never sat three people to a seat for high schools and middle schools. We're doing it now. We are getting rosters with 85 and 90 people on the roster, which is fine, because not all kids ride, but when the schools are closed for snow, and when we don't have teams going on, we are going to have fully-packed buses. Okay? We now are full, okay? And when we have breakdowns, we used to be able to take extra kids on the bus. If you had a breakdown in Cobalt Ridge, the three buses in Cobalt Ridge that were also in that area, we'd pick up the kids and take them. Okay? That's not possible if your bus is fully loaded. I can pick up six or seven kids. I can't pick up 50. All right? So we're having problems picking up things when things get stuck, when someone breaks down. Okay? We're currently having, and I'm glad you appreciate it, our office staff and mechanics going out on the road to cover this. But this is a long-term problem that needs to be solved. Okay? It's not something that is just going to go away. It's been going on last year. We had to cancel things last year, even when we had office staff and mechanics out. We're not in a busy period right now, and we're running all mechanics and office staff out. I really am going to suggest two solutions to you today. One is, stop having STA, try to hire full-time people. I've been told we have three full-time positions in transportation that need to be filled. And they go to STA to get the job, and STA tells them, no, we only have part-time positions, and
Time.
we don't have benefits.
Ma'am, you reached your time limit.
Can I just, one sentence more?
If you'd like, you can come back to the second public comment and have another three minutes, if you'd like.
Okay, that's fine. I'll come back to the second one.
Thank you.
Debbie Canty?
Seeing no one approaching the podium. I call the second, the first round of public comment closed. That brings us to Routine Matters. I would like to make a motion to combine and approve Items 2.01 through 2.06. They are our minutes, Treasurers' Report, the Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, Budget Transfers, Investments, and Exonerations. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns on those items? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extent, yeah, I say that wrong all the time. Item passes eight, zero. Now, three, yes, Personnel Administrative. Now we come to 3.01, our appointments resolved. That the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for administrative staff, and that is our Kristin McCreary for Assistant Principal at Maple Point Middle School. Comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
I need a second.
I need a second. I'm sorry, I made the motion. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Now, I'm excited to bring you aboard. Now, comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Seeing none? Eight point, eight-two-zero, Agenda Item passes.
Mr. Allen, Mrs. McCreary's in the back of the room. Stand up and say hello. Congratulations. Come on in. I believe this is Mr. McCreary as well? Yes? Come on in. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That brings us to Agenda's Item 4, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Sullivan, could you take us through those, please?
Yes. I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 4.01, Appointments; 4.02, Leaves of Absence; 4.03, Revised Leaves of Absence; 4.04, Co-Curricular Resignations; 4.05, Co-Curricular Appointments. I think that's it, but hold on. And that's it. That's it.
There's a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo.
That brings us to Agenda. Agenda 5, Personnel Support. Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments; 5.02, Appointments; 5.03, Leaves of Absence; 5.04, Revised Returns from Leave; 5.05, Ancillary Appointments. I would also like to make special notice in this motion for retirements, resignations, and end of assignments. Raina Ganzar, I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly, 36 years of service with us, thank you, and Kim Haisley, 20 years of service, thank you.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Rodriguez. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that item? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes eight, zero. And that brings us to, am I correct? Business Operations. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'd like to make a motion for 6.01, Field Project Change Order Process. Whereas, in any construction project, it becomes necessary for change orders because of unforeseen conditions or owner-desired alterations to construction plans. And whereas, to keep the construction project on schedule, these change orders are sometimes needed to be approved before the next board meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shammany High School Fields Project of 2022 through 2023, the following levels of approval are authorized for nondiscretionary change orders only, with the understanding that all change orders are subject to approval by the majority of the school board members at a subsequent public meeting, and further limits modifications during the course of the projects. The Business Administrator and Superintendent, up to $25,000 per change order, and Board President and Chairperson of the Facilities and Planning Committee, from $25,000 and a penny to $100,000 per change order.
There's a motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments, questions, or concerns? I just have one comment on this, just so the public and the Board, Board is aware of this, we discussed it, but the public knows this is not carte blanche, where just simply things come up, such as the rock vein we ran into when we were digging up the fields. It required a quick decision made. Obviously, the Fields Project had to move forward, but decision had to be made. All decisions involving public money still come back before this full board, just so everyone is clear on that. That said, call that motion to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Item passes eight, zero. 6.02, Mr. Sporni, please.
Yes, 6.02, Approval of Change Orders for the Fields Project. Whereas, in any construction project, it becomes necessary for change orders because of unforeseen conditions or owner-desired alterations to construction plans, and whereas the following change orders have been identified and desired for the Fields Project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the following change orders be approved for the Fields Project. Field turf, $50,000, 624.03, change order to move 8-inch waterline from running under the auxiliary field. Number 2, Musco Lighting, $103,000, 616, change order to move the electrical grid work to, for the auxiliary field. This change moves the work, moves the work to Musco Lighting and removes the work from the electrical contractor scope of work at the fieldhouse. Number 3, M&amp;W Precast, $10,100, change order to storage, to add a storage room to the visitor dugouts for both the baseball fields and softball fields, with three attachments that I did open and review.
Thank you, Mr. Sporni. Questions, comments, concerns, the Board?
Need a second.
It needs a second first. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbeck. Now, questions, comments, concerns? Call that motion to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero. Eight-two-zero. 6.03, Mr. Cirillo, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.03, Contract Revision with Stadium Solutions for Changes to Visitor's Side Bleachers. Whereas, it is the Shammany School District's desire to enclose the visitor's bleacher, bleachers, or both the front and side closest to the fieldhouse, and whereas Stadium Solutions Inc. has revised their contract to incorporate the desired changes and the added expense of $80,563. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the amended contract with Stadium Solutions Inc. to include the bleachers, front and side panels, for the bleacher project to be approved for a total cost of $3,036,008.
Motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sporni. Comments, questions, concerns from the Board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes eight, zero. Brings us to 6.04. Mr. Sporni, please.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion, 6.04, Field Turf Change Order Related to the Bleachers. Whereas, it is the Shammany School District contracted with Stadium Solutions Inc. to demo the existing bleachers and erect new bleachers in their place, and whereas the new bleachers will be set back on both sides approximately 10 feet to allow for the possibility of the addition of two lanes to make the track eight lanes. And whereas, the setback of the bleachers requires additional concrete walkways to facilitate the walkways, and there is a need for additional site work for the new ADA-compliant ramps. And whereas, Field Turf subcontractor Land Tech has submitted a change order to provide this work in the amount of $96,317.63. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the change order with Field Turf to include the additional walkways for the new placement of the bleachers be approved for a total cost of $11,598,488.66, one file attached.
That is the editorial change.
We could comment on it, we can get a
Well, hold on. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Now we can discuss. That on the, most of us have $3,036, and the corrected number is
So, this is, so
Total project.
The number from 6.03 was accidentally carried down to 6.04. We made the change, the change is online, and I gave Mr. Sporni the number prior to read. So that is the total cost of the subcontract to Land Tech.
That's doing, that doing the entire turf project, yes.
Mr. Sporni, do you have that final number again for us, please?
So the final number of what I believe we're calling the Fields Project, which is not inclusive of the bleachers, is $11,598,488.66.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none? Call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Agenda Item passes, motion passes eight, zero. Brings us to 6.05. Mr. Sullivan, please.
6.05, Sale of Oliver Heckman. Whereas, the Shammany School District herein, hereinafter referred to as the District, is authorized under the provisions of the Pennsylvania School Code, 24PS, Section 7-707, to sell unused and unnecessary real estate and buildings by several methods, sealed bid, public auction, or private sale, and where it is, as it is the desire and intention of the school district, to entertain proposals to the potential private sale of the real property situated at East Maple Avenue and Cherry Street, Langhorne Borough, Middletown Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, further known as Bucks County Tax Map Parcels 22-021-079-001 and 22-027-008-001. Hereinafter, collectively referred to as the property, as is an unused property of the district as defined in the Pennsylvania School Code, and whereas the slate was previously used as a district elementary school through June 2016, known as Oliver Heckman Elementary School, and whereas, other than storage, the property has not been used since 2016. And whereas, in order to facilitate the potential private sale of the property, in accordance with the PEA School Code, the district desires to entertain proposals based upon certain criteria. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Business Administrator and District Solicitor are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to prepare the parameters and criteria to solicit a request for proposal for a private sale of the property, along with any and all instruments, agreements, and documents necessary to facilitate same, all of which will be subject to, shall be subject to Board approval.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Comments, questions, discussion from Board? Just want to clarify, this does not, this is nothing about actual sale, it is simply allowing us to entertain what's out there. That's all it means. What comes of that, it will still always be up to full Board approval. Motion has been made, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero. 6.06, due to some last-minute information that came to the Board's attention, I am asking for a motion to table 6.06, the award of construction bids for the new elementary school at this time. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Comments, questions, concerns?
This is just until we get the last-minute information figured out, and we will be voting on these bids at the next meeting?
Yes. Correct. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero. That brings us to Agenda Items 7, Educational Development. Ms. Bowman, please.
I'd like to make a motion, 7.01, Student Settlement Agreement. Whereas, the Shammany School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student number 7XXXXX0. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves, providing, hereby approves, providing for the educational programings as specified in said agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. There is a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Comments, questions, or concerns on 7.01? Hearing none, move the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero.
I'd like to make a motion, 7.02, Overnight Trips. Whereas, according to Board Policy Number 619, trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the school board directors only. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following overnight trips, and the following overnight trips, and there are three.
There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second? Second by Ms. Hollenbeck, by the way, it's Policy 618, just clarifies. Any comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero. Sorry, I didn't know if that would get us in trouble, just let that sit, citing the wrong policy, that's all, I just noticed that.
It's Policy 618 in the motion.
Right. You read 619. Oh, I'm the one who heard it, 619? I heard 619. Okay. My apologies. That brings us to closing of the meeting. Do we have any other board business? Anyone from the board, anything you'd bring to our attention? Seeing none, that brings us to our second round of public comment. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit, and if you would like to approach the podium? Please state your name, your... Pushed the button, right, sorry.
My name is Anna Borzos. I am a, I live in the district, I work at Herbert Hoover in Emotional Support. I am speaking on behalf of many IAs and some of my other coworkers. This district pays much lower than other districts, approximately $3 per hour for IAs, even lower than some of the Nishamani bus drivers. A 4% raise, which was in the tentative agreement, is less than a dollar per hour. This is not enough. The cost of living projected in 2023 is 9.6%. Many of my coworkers also need medical insurance for themselves and their families to survive. A neighboring district employs over 100 IAs full-time with insurance benefits. It has also come to our attention that the district has been offering some part-time IAs to work a half-hour per day above their normal hours, and this has been happening for the last two to three years, and still happening to this day. I was offered this after two other employees were offered it, but I turned it down on principle. The Affordable Care Act says if you work over 30 hours per week, you should be offered health care. Am I wrong in this statement? This practice has not been offered by seniority or merit. Why has it been kept a secret? Last week, my principal had to spend part of his day in the emotional support classroom next door to mine. I saw him leaving for the day, when I was leaving for the day, and he said, "I don't know how you do this." And I said, "I leave exhausted every day." Saying you want to be able to switch our classifications whenever you want after we have been trained in these areas is illogical. We interact with all students in our schools and believe we want the best workers to support your students. You are losing and could lose great employees. Come spend some time doing our job in all classifications, and maybe you'll understand how we feel. A lot of us live and have graduated from Nishamani, live in Nishamani, our children graduated from here, and some are present students. We want to make the district excess, SSS, success, sorry. At the last public board meeting, you made a statement stating you are extremely disappointed in our union members rejecting the contract agreement. As you can see, we are very disappointed in the way we are being respected for the work we do. Do you value us? Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Again, if you would, state your name again.
It's Amy Locasell, Transportation. First, just one correction, someone in the back told me, you mentioned that we had 100 bus drivers. We used to have 100, 112. We got about 50 to 55 bus drivers, maybe 25 people from STA. So we're doing basically more work, we have more students now than we did before, with 75% of the staff. So please understand that start with, okay? Why van drivers work great for small private schools, they're not covering the big schools, okay? We don't have enough drivers. We haven't had enough drivers for the last two years. The last two summers, I've asked about it, please train them over the summer, nothing happens. We got one person trained as a bus driver over the whole summer. Trainers have been told, we have 40 people in a file somewhere, we're going to train bus drivers. Not one of them has received notice of anybody to train. What I'm asking you to do is to make an effort. These people are breaking their backs trying to do their job, and you're not seeing it. Please come into the office and talk to the people. They are totally frustrated. We're not in high demand yet. We don't have sports trips going out every day for the summer sports yet, along with the class trips. When that happens, we're not going to be able to cover it. We got people retiring in January. I talked two people last year to stay, they're leaving in January. They've had enough of it, okay? Please, listen to the drivers. Make an effort. STA, I watched them come in, I was, I had to do some work, I stayed in the break room, I watched a trainer, had three people come in, "Oh, I got a new kid, I need a job." "Oh, well, we only offer them part-time, no benefits." Walked right out. Three of them came in and walked right out. They're hiring part-time workers, we need full-time bus drivers. Please understand that. If you're going to have STA control this, we're never going to get full-time bus drivers, okay? We're never going to be able to transport the people we need to transport, all right? This year, we had three full-time positions beginning of the year that were refused to be posted. I don't know if you're aware of that. We've never had three full-time positions in the beginning of a school year with benefits posted. When I was hired, '95, I was lucky if I got four or five hours. Now we got full-time positions with benefits, and we're not filling them. Okay? I want you to be aware of this, okay? It's not a joke, and I'm really asking you, if you're going to have STA hire people, we're never going to have it. Let's have somewhat Nishamani interview people for full-time bus drivers and get some staff. Let's try to dual-train some of these van drivers, so when we're short people, they can cover a bus run maybe. Okay? I really want you to understand what the situation is, okay? And Dr. McGee, I would love you to come into Transportation and listen to the drivers, okay? I really would. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I close our second round of public comment. And bring us to Board Comment. Anyone?
I can't find the job, Mr. So if somebody else wants to talk, I'll look through like a mail.
Well, I jumped the gun, so, yes. Dr. McGee, I should have asked you for comment first, sorry.
The only comment I have is, go Phillies.
No one else? Cindy?
All right. I have very little comment tonight as well, other than because I missed both homecoming and our kaleidoscope of bands, which I, I've only attended once, and it blew me away, fantastic. The end, when they all get, come together and play on the field, that's just chilling. But unfortunately, I missed it. This is my busy season. Every time I make plans, somebody calls and I have to go to work. Other than that, yes, Phillies win, fantastic, and I'm really enjoying seeing all the Philly gear throughout the schools, the elementary school, and then the high school. That's just fantastic. I've always said what's, what's good for the city is good for us out here in the suburbs, and our sports team's doing well is good for the city. Bring that. I'll point out future meetings. We have 10/27, we have a Policy Committee. We have work session on the 9th of November. On November 15th, we have the next Facility and Planning Committee, and on the 16th of November, we have the Business Operations Committee. That, I call this meeting to a close. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Agenda item passes eight zero. Have a great evening, everyone.